Right, like to call to order the Nantucket Regional Authority Transit Authority Meeting to Order Advisory Board. Any public comment that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go to announcements. Thank you Paula. Oh, I'm sorry, um, happy birthday Paula.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, big birthday.
Got a couple of very exciting announcements. The first one is everyone is invited to attend what is going to be a very fun kickoff event for year-round service Friday 10 o'clock in the morning at the Greenhound Building. There will be refreshments, contests to win a free annual pass and some fun giveaway items and the crowd will be engaged in the actual kickoff component of the event. So, please come, it'll be a fun time. And the other announcement is that there is now year-round bus service, that after Columbus Day for the first time, the buses will keep rolling. The Mid-Island Loop, Maya Comet Loop and Sconset Via Old South Road Route will continue to operate after Columbus Day and provide year-round bus service to the community. Service will be provided from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM weekdays and 7 to 7:00 weekends. The Mid-Island Loop, Maya Comet Loop will operate on a 30-minute schedule and the Sconset Via Old South Road Route will primarily service the Old South Road, Nobodere Farm Road corridor with a few daily trips to Sconset. So, users of that route, I encourage to look at the website because the winter schedule is very different than what the summer schedule is on that route. And it's all on our website and our winter service rider guides are out and available. So, you can pick one up. And just to also let everyone know, that rider's guide, because it was an off-year, is through December 31st. We're working on the entire 2019 rider's guide that will be out sometime early November. But the service that you see through December will continue January, February, March and into May.
Mr. Chairman.
On the year-round bus service, it's, you know, it's congratulations. It's been something we've all worked hard for. And I know this is going to be a transitional year, but for me, it would be helpful if we saw at our next meeting, and I'm not sure when that is, some interim statistics on ridership of those routes after Columbus Day. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I also would like, I took the bus from, the bus stopped here, took me six minutes with two stops. So, it was a very fast ride. And I asked everybody there, some people looked at me kind of funny, but I said, "Are you going to be taking this in the offseason? Do you know we have year-round bus service?" They all knew it. Three people said, I have this all written down, three people said, "I'm leaving in a couple of weeks when I'm taking it." Five of them said, they looked at me funny and said, "Yeah, of course."
Oh, good.
So, that could have been anomaly, but it was, it was the way they looked at me, like, "Yeah, why would I not take this? We're really happy that it's here." And somebody worked downtown and they get off around 4:00, 4:30. They go to Stop &amp; Shop, they get their couple groceries, then off they go to home. So, just, just an example of how some people will be using it.
Yep. Great.
All right, so approval of minutes from the July 25, 2018 meeting. For motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, now we have the Transit Asset Management Plan. Do you want to have any questions on that or comments? Paula, Paula just can give us a quick brief overview of what that is.
Sure. This is a requirement from the federal government. All public agencies throughout the nation's needed to develop a transit asset management plan. It's basically a tool that will aid transit providers in assessing the current condition of the capital assets, determining the condition and performance of its assets and what they should be, identifying any unacceptable risks, including safety risks, and continuing to use an asset that is not in a state of good repair and deciding how to balance, to best balance that and prioritize reasonably the anticipated funds toward improving asset condition and achieving a sufficient level of performance within those means. So, to help with this, 11 of the 15 regional transit authorities in the state came together, got a software program from Cambridge Systematics that had all the elements that met the federal regulations. So, all the assets are plugged in into that with a ton of information and this will calculate depreciation, state of good repair, you assign a number which is part of the TAM plan to your assets and when they need to be replaced. It's also intended to be a tool for the state and federal government that they can use so that the state can say, "Oh, of the 15 RTAs, there's 100 vehicles that are 2011 buses that have a seven-year life. We need to try to plan funding for those to be replaced so that the transit authorities can operate in a state of good repair." So, the plan includes all the required elements. And I would ask the board to approve that unless you have any further questions.
Any question?
No.
Make a motion to approve the plan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There's no other business that I know of, anything else?
No, I don't.
Want to thank Mr. John Malloy for coming today. He's a disabled representative for Nerdah. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry, two.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
To adjourn is what I was trying to say. Thank you Paula, thank you John. Rita, you want to jump into?
County.
Yep.
Wait one second.
Yeah, sure.
Get out of here.
Yeah, absolutely. I had one in my truck. I do have one.
I'm sure you do.
I think we all do.
This was mine. We can get started, we'll be all right. Now, we're good. Want to go ahead Rita?
Yep, I'd like to call to order the September 26, 2018 County Commissioners Meeting. Any announcements other than it's being recorded? No, it's being video and audio recorded. Any public comment? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes and warrants. We'll do them together unless there's an objection.
Make a motion to approve both.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to official business.
We're on the county.
Request for execution of release of easement lots for 1 and 4, Lovers Lane and Boulevard. Andrew?
Thank you Commissioners. On the map behind you, you see that we're releasing what is shown as lots 1 and Lot 4 from the layout that we adopted for the roads in the Surfside area. Reason for this release is the owners have requested the ability to landscape this parcel which is outside the layouts of the road. It's not needed for road purposes. So, we have the remainder parcels, JJJ and HHH remain within the layout. So, we're simply releasing our layout lines over this particular property.
Is this something that we've done before?
Yes, if there's surplus land that, that basically, I mean, this is additional land for the county to care for and take care of. And again, it's, if you look at the subdivision of the Surfside area with this extensive grid, there were many area, you know, areas devoted to streets because of the original density that was proposed. So, basically, the road, the entrance into Pochek curves around here and Boulevard is fully constructed now, so this area is just not needed. The bike path is also on the opposite side of Boulevard and that's where the additional, that's where we need the additional land.
Okay.
How many square feet is the?
I think it's roughly 900 square feet.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's like .04.
It's, it's very small. 1,900 maybe I think total.
Are there any questions?
Make a motion to approve the request for execution of the release of the easement for lots 1 and 4, Lovers Lane and Boulevard.
All seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's, and maybe we'll just take a minute before we move on to the next. Will we take one minute to move on? Is Mr. Malloy okay? Then we will move on to public hearings. And this is a public hearing to consider the taking of permanent easements for roadway purposes. It's the entire private way known as Amelia Drive.
Thank you, Board Members. Last, at the prior meeting, we discussed this and since that time, we prepared the taking documents. There were no objections at that time, as you remember, so we'd asked the board to close the public hearing on this matter and move forward with the taking in, consistent with our discussion that we had the last time.
And so, Andrew, this is part of the process where we have a second public hearing or no? This is, right, so this is, this is that process then?
Yep. Continuation of the first, there was not any objections.
Okay.
At that meeting. And so, now is, we're asking that you move forward. There were two other items that did have objections and those had to be rescheduled.
Okay.
Do I have no questions? This is all part of a plan and makes a lot of sense. Let's move forward.
No, there's no questions, is there a motion? Oh, is, is this a public hearing? Are there any questions from the public? Hearing none, close the public hearing? And?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, can I have a couple of questions real quick? So, we're taking the entire, you know, the entirety of the roadway?
Correct.
So, 20 and 20, we're taking 40 feet?
Forty feet, yes.
Was there any consideration of taking less than that or what's, what was the, what was the rationale or?
Well, that would be completely different than all our other roads. It would leave a strange stretch of private road in between the public limits and the private property.
But just because we're taking 40 doesn't mean we have to construct 40.
Oh, no, no, no. You know, within, and there's been some confusion about this, within the road are the traveled way, which is where the vehicles are moving back and forth, the landscaped shoulders, sidewalks.
Right, I understand a lot, yeah. For the camera, that's a good thing to say.
I thought it might be good just to bring up.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
And the reason, part of why I'm asking is some of this ends up being the town's responsibility when we, you know, I look at it and say, "Why don't, you know, we, like, some of these subdivisions, we should have done them right to begin with. We should get them correct before we take them." You know, sometimes we're taking on a lot of responsibility, maybe not as much with this case, but there are whole roads that cost millions of dollars to repair and, and they weren't built very well to begin with. So, I just, you know, I consistently point that out, that this money has to come from somewhere. If we're taking the full burden of this on, that means we're all paying for it and someone else didn't pay for it. So, I just, you know, when we get to the point of how we're going to do it, I'd like to make sure we're looking at, you know, what's the smartest, most economical way to do it and, you know, and maybe it's a one-way with another one-way. I still would like to see on-street parking. I talk about that every time because it slows people down. I don't want to turn it into a raceway. So, how we proceed, I'm happy with the taking, but I just need to keep bringing, you know, we need to use smart planning when we do it.
Jason?
Well, that.
You know, I think the public interest far outweighs the cost of, or the, you know, the benefit that may accrue to the private owner for not having to maintain it. We've been discussing this for many years. It's a source of major concern on the part of people that use now that throughway. So, I'm excited we're moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, obviously in hindsight, it could have been done in a different way, but now that it's fully developed and all of the connections that it makes, it makes a lot of sense. And I think part of the problem is trying to create on-street parking, which is obviously necessary with all of the business activities that are happening there. And it's becoming more of a, much more of a commercial node that's important.
But if we made it with, if we ran a parallel street through here or somehow else and looked at that, maybe we could leave it as it is. That's all, you know, I just, and, you know, and I'm a fan at times of betterments to, you know, to get some of this up to speed, but that's, you know, I understand that.
For the plan portion, we did get a contribution from one of the businesses.
Yeah.
Right, the plan, there was a $10,000 contribution from the owner of the market and that paid for the plan and, or.
Can we get your microphones louder? Oh, we just can't hear the thing you're saying.
Need to move it closer. Is that better?
Until I turn it off.
So, that paid for the, for the plan, for the advertising and the legal work necessary to get this created.
Any more questions? No?
Make a motion that we approve the taking of permanent easements for roadway purposes and lay out a modification of public roads for, as outlined in the agenda item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks Andrew.
Any Commissioners reports or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you Rita. Let's call to order the September 26 Select Board Meeting. No changes to the agenda that I'm aware of. I'm trying to talk into this. Announcements, Libby?
Thank you. This meeting is being video and audio recorded. The next board meeting, select board meeting, will not be next Wednesday, it will be next Tuesday, same time, 6:00 PM, same location here, so that the board members may attend the Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on Wednesday, the 3rd regarding Surfside Commons Crossing 40B. Town offices will be closed on Monday, October 8th for Columbus Day. And as hopefully by now, many people know, we have two special town meetings, both on the same day, October 10th, starting at 6:00 PM. There's a special voter registration deadline for both of them this Friday at 8:00 at the Town Clerk's Office in the Town Building.
Everyone, could you announce the Finance Committee Public Hearing since it had to been, it was, had to be rescheduled?
Yes, thank you. The Finance Committee Public Hearing on Special Town Meeting 2 that was meant to be held this past Monday is rescheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, the 27th at 4:00 here in this room.
Thank you.
Upstairs, sorry. Training room, second floor.
I just want to throw in there on the registration, I've been talking to people just randomly, "Hey, are you registered to vote?" And I've gotten two that were not and they registered on Monday. So, just, just to bring, you know, bring it up. People kind of forget that they're not registered and then they, town meeting comes up and they're like, "Oh, I meant to do that." Something to think about.
Can I just say?
Yeah.
That when I did the voter list for the Special Town Meeting warrant, we had 8,616 registered voters.
Wow.
Wow.
It seems lower to me. Seems high. I thought we were at 9,000.
No, it was like 70, in the high 70s.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's great. Okay, is there any public comment here tonight that's not on the agenda? Mr. Lowell?
Members of the Board, I'll sign my antiquated delivery.
Thank you.
I'll make this very brief.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm here tonight. Is this working? Behalf of the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board, Andrew Lowell. We of the Harbor Shellfish Advisory Board believe that household hazardous waste disposal should be more accessible. A large number of island homeowners are here for short periods of time and cannot coordinate with current collection dates. Number of contractors are also transient and do not have a shop or a facility to properly store these materials. When a new home or a renovation is completed, many of their products are disposed of in dumpsters. There are several scenarios that influence people to improperly dispose of materials, project deadlines, home sales having deadlines, not coordinating with, with our limited weekend times. Some contractors also are simply not here during the weekends. We know that there are many contractors here between Monday and Thursday only. I myself have found it difficult to dispose of my hazardous waste being away several weekends and just find it inconvenient. There are communities in New England offering daily hazardous waste collections at their transfer stations. A building similar to our Take It or Leave It with a multitasking attendant properly storing the materials and drums for shipment is common elsewhere. We would also like to suggest a system be devised through the Building Department and the permitting process where each job site should be required to possess on the premises a leak and rain-proof container for hazardous waste storage. It has become too convenient for these products to land in the dumpster and ultimately leak into the ground. And although latex paint is not considered a hazardous material, we do know that it can be hazardous if disposed of improperly, so it should be treated as one if we could. We believe our environment is worth this investment. I've, Rob, Mr. McNeil was kind enough to attend one of our meetings. We've spoken about this already. We have not mentioned it to the Plus Department or Building Department, but we're just simply hoping to raise some awareness and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lowell. Great ideas. Any other public comment here tonight, not on the agenda? All right, seeing none, move on to, there's no new business that I know of. Get a motion to approve the minutes payroll warrants and treasury warrants as stated on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pending contracts, any that you want to go over?
There's one that I would like to bring to your attention. It's the, close, second to last one, GZA Environmental, says a contract for coastal engineering and wave modeling for the town pier. As I think you all know, we've, well, I think you, you had some discussion about this about a month ago. And it was with regard to the engineering for the renovations to the town pier and the floating docks. In a nutshell, we are doing some re-looking at the engineering and it's going to modify the schedule and modify the scope of work. Yesterday, there was a kind of a stakeholders' meeting with a number of the users of the town pier with our strategic projects manager Chuck Larson and harbor master Sheila Lucy reviewing. And I just thought if they could give an abbreviated version of what happened yesterday at the stakeholders' meeting, so you all are informed as to the schedule and the scope of work.
So, we, we had a plan for a new floating dock that went out to a contract and was going out for bids. But we got some red flags on it. We saw some things that gave us concern, so we pumped the brakes and we're going to have the engineers take another look at it. And we're also going to have an independent group take a look at what the engineers come up with. Our concern was that it wasn't going to withstand the weather conditions that we get here on Nantucket or storms like that we've had in recent years. So, we decided rather than ask you guys for money and ask for, the taxpayers for some money, for something that might blow up after the first storm, we decided the best thing to do would be stop, take a second look at it, get some conditions that are current to here, have them look at the waves, have them look at the wind conditions and stuff that we experienced during significant storms. So, our plan for this year is, although disappointing, we're not going to be able to go through with it with a new dock for this year. But what we're going to do is take the floating dock that we have now, we're going to take it out of the water so that it'll be safe from the storms that we have. We'll do some repairs to it while we're on the beach, some repairs that we couldn't get done when it was in the water last year. And then we'll reinstall it in the spring. And while all that's going on, we're going to have the engineers take a second look at it. We're going to have another, an independent group take a look at that. We're looking at wave attenuators, we're looking at different types of things to protect both the fixed pier and the floating pier. Then we're hoping to have everything in place and ready to go for annual town meeting to ask for whatever money it's going to cost us that we need. But we feel that this is the right thing to do. Stakeholders, we're, although disappointed, we're right on board with the fact, we'd rather do it right the first time than have it blow up and then have us have to come back to you guys, explain it and beg for more money to fix it. So, that, that in a nutshell is what we're doing. We got some ideas from the stakeholders that we're going to incorporate to, we're going to talk to the engineers about. We've gone and looked at different places. They're putting wave attenuators. I saw one in Plymouth that has a similar situation as us, also Province Town Harbor. They're putting in wave attenuators. They went forward with their plan and theirs ended up doing exactly what we were afraid was going to happen here. Theirs ended up blowing up and they had to go back for another $325,000 and now they had to go back for more wave attenuators. So, we just want to do it right the first time. We're going to take best practices from these other communities that have just been through this. We went and looked at Sacertucket Harbor, they just put in a new facility, a new floating dock systems. And we're, you know, in conversations with all the contractors and stuff that are around to make sure that we're giving the best bang for our buck.
I guess when they, when they're looking at this, what are they projecting? Are they putting in the sea level rise that's expected and some of those things? Yeah, that's great.
They're actually going to do three-dimensional modeling.
All right, great.
Which is a more rigorous level of analysis.
Right.
For that area, they're also going to accommodate, you know, the new conditions with jetties which were rebuilt. And so, it's a very comprehensive level of analysis.
One of the questions that we had was dredging. Some of the people said part of it had to be dredged sooner rather than later. Is any of that happening prior to this or?
Our dredging permit is good until February 2020, so we'll still be all set with it. And so, this way, we don't have to pay to get the pilings taken out, put back in and all that stuff. Again, we're just trying to save money.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll say, I'm glad to see that we're, you know, taking a second look at this. I've been on the board, you know, what, almost nine years over the last 15 and have, you know, voted to fix it about three times, three or four times. So, it would be great if we built this thing solid.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you listening to the concerns we raised last time, so it's good to know that.
Any other questions for?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to approve the pending contracts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we have two consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent items as listed.
I'll second it for discussion if I can.
Sure.
One thing I noticed, and it's just a quick question, normally when we get these, we get the PNS or the deeds in there and we're able to check that it's going to conform with town zoning and other things, that it's going to be the same as all the others?
Do you want them back in your packet?
Well, I just want to make, if, they don't have to be in there if I know that it's going to say, you know, conform with town zoning. Okay.
Call it a normal condition, sir.
Right, because what we, the reason, and the reason I'm asking this, when we, and it's taken a few years to sort of get it to this level, but there is wording in there that none of these can be turned into 40Bs. It says that they have to conform with town zoning in a certain way. And, you know, so that, so that's just one concern. There's a couple others about subdivision and other issues. And as long as those are always included, then we're fine if we're doing this. So.
And those components actually override the 40B rules? Like that's actually accepted?
Yeah, I believe they do because it's on the deed and they've put it on the deed themselves.
Is this a condition for accepting the deed?
Okay.
And if they want to give these things up, they have to, if they want to do, change it or give it up, they have to come back and ask permission on some of these. So, there are some restrictions that are in place here that are important for the future.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so as long as I've had that assurance, I'm fine.
Any other discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes. On to public hearings. I'd like to open the public hearing to consider the taking of portions of paper streets for public access, open space, recreation use purposes, or general municipal purposes and the following town meeting votes. We have A, B, and C.
Two of them, Nobodere Farm, right there.
Yes, all three, A, B, and C. At once.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. You've done quite a few of these over time. These three are all located in the Surfside neighborhood and basically, this is part of the process of clearing the title to these former paper streets laid out in 1880, dismantling this old subdivision and eventually deeding the remainder properties to the abutters. So, which one are we talking about first, the one on the screen? So, this is a portion of Shimo Street and here, the, these were included in a subdivision from the 1980s that included both of these parcels. You can see that this street is already in use by the abutters. It's part of their lots already. It's part of their lots already. So this action clears the title of this so it could be conveyed to them. Should we skip on through the next one? There's a small portion and really there was an error in how this was, this small corner which measures 40 by 40 feet was described in the original warrant article, so we had to amend that. And now we're following through with that taking. Pretty much all of the streets shown in this have been conveyed already. So this last little corner is part of the acquisition. And then the last one is yet another parcel which bisects through somebody's private And, you know, there's two, two lots as shown. So the first step is the taking. We're asking you to move forward with that tonight and at some point in the future there will be a disposition. None of these have any real public purpose, so their anticipated use is to return back to the abutters. Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on any three of these pieces, properties? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. It's a pleasure of the Board.
Can I ask just a quick question? Actually, A and C, so Shimo and Beach Plum, do those increase the ground cover?
They don't. Because that particular area is already included in the lot areas.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Anything else on that?
Ready for a motion? I'd make a motion that we approve the takings of these, of A, B, and C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Town managers report.
Uh, DPW Director is going to give an overview of a sidewalk and street, partial street project, street reconstruction project on Main Street. I think he's got a bit of a PowerPoint to take you through and this is an update for you all. And any questions that you have could be answered at this time. There's been a couple of public informational sessions about this project.
Thank you very much. So as Libby mentioned, sidewalk improvement program has been ongoing now for, development for this has been years in the works with input from multiple departments, several various committees weighing in and lots of folks that have many, many years here in the town, uh, working together to pull this program together. Briefly, the complete streets policy that was effective May 2016 really just talks about how Nantucket is recognizing all users in all modes of transportation. And you can read the rest of it. But it's part of the puzzle. So the sidewalk improvement program, as it currently stands, as you know, has basically been starting at the waterfront and essentially making a smooth connection between the High Line and the Steamship along the Straight Wharf, Easy Street corridor. And so I think it's a good time to remind everybody that there's various goals to achieve throughout all of these projects, but they don't necessarily apply to every place that we're working or will work. So for instance, the early stages of this project, again, addressing Straight Wharf and Easy Street, were more to handle increased pedestrian volumes. So that's where we're seeing widenings and, but the primary goals of safety and accessibility are fundamental to the entirety of the project. Taxi loading zones, commercial loading zones, parking in general, and certainly historic preservation is looked at as a whole, but it's also looked at individually as we look at various pieces of the puzzle. So outreach, specific to this, to the sidewalk improvements, we've been doing various public information sessions at various times. We've done direct mailings to abutters. We've created website pages for specific areas. And we've also done and continue to do individual meetings with residents at their homes, at their businesses to address specific concerns and to come to, let's say, consensus on how the sidewalk improvements will come through their properties or along their frontages. The progress so far with the, overwhelmingly, the feedback has been positive. We certainly have had our share of negative feedback, mostly attributed to disruption during construction. And I think going through the Straight Wharf, um, early season last year was a real wake-up call for me. And we've been able to work with the contractor to both increase signage and to develop techniques that keep businesses open during construction and really try to limit disruption. Accessibility during construction is essentially a stone dust path that is now brought up to grade if it gets left through the weekend or is going to be open for any extended time before we can apply the final layer of brick. The predominant goal through the safety and accessibility is also to, to make sure that the sidewalks can withstand structural integrity or have structural integrity to withstand the expected loads, both with vehicles and trucks traversing up over them through various times of the year. So we've developed specific cross-sections to withstand those weights. A similar technique that was used along South Beach Street following the sewer force main failure reconstruction of that street. So currently we have, we're, completed a substantial portion of Straight Wharf and Easy Street. Of course, South Beach Street and a small section of Broad Street was done last winter. And we are currently working in the Zero Main Street area at the top of Straight Wharf. And we plan on continuing our efforts at the High Lines side of Straight Wharf before continuing up Easy Street towards Broad Street. Simultaneously, we are, following Columbus Day, we are planning to start at 86 Main Street, 86 and 88 Main Street and, and create an example on the Upper Main Street section to be able to give folks in that neighborhood a sense of what the project is going to bring to them. There, we're not looking at widenings. We're simply looking at lifting the old materials, building, putting them back in a more structurally sound foundation and putting the materials right back on top. So there are sections in Upper Main Street that, uh, materials are not consistent with the older stuff that's there. There was some concrete and other materials that were introduced over the years. So we're going to be where we can, taking the concrete pieces out and replacing those with recovered natural materials that are more in keeping with the, the period that that section is, is from. This is a sidewalk project first. And until the sidewalks are completed, the cobblestones will remain as is. There's some work to be done, particularly on Upper Main Street by the Sewer Department. And David is, is working expeditiously to support us by getting on board and getting whatever he needs to, to do in that work zone completed, I think, by end of calendar year, which sets the stage for when the sidewalks are completed to come in and do cobblestone work. We anticipate the, the speed that, with, which we've been able to do the Straight Wharf, Easy Street, kind of the lower and the widening area is going to substantially slow down when we start to look at Upper Main Street. The work up there is going to be a lot more meticulous. There's a lot more need to pay attention to details. And there's also a tremendous amount of trees, mature trees with tree roots. Each one of these aspects of the project will have to be looked at individually, which is another reason why no plans, no construction level plans have been created. We're literally taking out the old and determining what we have there to work with and then working around it to try to keep and maintain first the, the tree roots and maintain the health of the, the beloved trees up there, working with some of the drainage, the, mostly the house drains and some of the other custom items up in those areas to, again, look to improve safety and accessibility, mostly with improving the surfaces. If we can achieve ADA accessibility at crossings, we're certainly looking to do that. But we're going to be flexible with our thoughts on full compliance and rather coming back in at the tail end of this with waiver requests where needed. With regard to parking on the Upper Main Street section, Transportation Group, Mike Burns and myself have measured the, counted and measured six crosswalks in this work zone totaling about 26 feet of width. The plan would be to eliminate these old, the slab crosswalks and to consolidate into two crosswalks, one at Pleasant Street and one at Winter Street, which would ultimately gain us a parking space in doing so. That parking space would be a, so a no net gain because we're talking about eliminating the last parking space opposite Pleasant Street to make sure that the, the turning radius through that critical area is maintained. Other than putting back exactly what's there, we are working with Number 98 to, to address, there's a jog in the curb line and some cobblestones in front of that sidewalk there that are on a very odd angle. So we're going to, we're, we're working with them right now to try to figure out the best scenario for that stretch of cobblestoned area and with the sidewalks to figure out how we can best navigate that. And directly opposite that is the picture at the front here, which is this area where it has three, three or four of these little bump-out tree wells. We solicited feedback when we did the field visit with the, the folks from, excuse me?
Are you trying to get to a second?
No, no, I'm just looking at this photo here. So there's, um, there's, there's three tree wells here. We're working on that. There's been discussions about continuing the sidewalk, I'm sorry, the curb line through here straight to essentially provide additional planted materials to help support these trees and give them a little bit more green space to be able to expand their root systems into in the future, but that's yet to be determined. So I can walk through the rest of these slides with that as a background. Here's some examples of work that has been previously completed from the before and afters from Google Earth. This is Easy Street before the bulkhead opposite, I think it's Vintage. So you could see the, the width that's here was narrowed to allow for the widened sidewalk and now where people used to walk in the street, they're now up on the sidewalk from a different direction. You could see the same, similar type of area. And this is when it was under construction last year. Uh, in front of Straight, down at Straight Wharf, Macy Warehouse is probably the most scrutinized area where we took up existing stone and worked with the NHA at their request to provide handicap accessibility, bring handicap accessibility to their building. So it was, it was actually a, quite a balancing act between maintaining the existing trees, providing an actual accessible route and, and entrance into the building, and then also bringing back the stones and reintroducing those to the walkway across the front. We have received feedback on those from some folks at the HDC and we, we plan on carrying that feedback forward. HDC has been involved and with the public information sessions as of late. And I think we'll continue to hear from them throughout, specifically the Upper Main Street portion.
Yeah, I think that was, I think the way you guys did that was great because it kept the historic, you know, it kept the historic feel integrity.
Sure.
By still improving the front of it.
That was the goal.
Yeah, and I think it did it.
I will say that the feedback we received, which again, it was helpful, I think, looking forward, is the, the thickness of the mortar around the stones was wider than people wanted to see. So again, taking these lessons forward, I think you'll see certainly a different, a different approach if we, if we had something like this come before us again.
Now, when you're, you're talking about taking away crosswalks and doing a couple crosswalks, are you going to be able to still integrate sort of the, the large stones that, you know, that are there and keeping it similar to how it looks now?
Uh, just so I can clarify what you're actually stating, so the...
Well, you've got, there's a, you, you said there's four or five crosswalks existing.
Six, six crosswalks.
Six.
And there, right now, there are, so there's sort of slab stones on the ground. There's no landings and that's, you know, that's quite common actually around town where there's no actual ramp system. So the plan would be to remove those stones and put cobblestones in their place. When the cobblestone project came, you know, came through, we wouldn't do it before that. But we, what we did, what we would do is we would build the ramp systems to support the new crosswalks and put the new crosswalks in. And then when the cobblestone project came along, the old ones would be taken out. But we would, if, if there's opportunity to reuse that slab stone that's in the street on the curb stones, as curb stones, we would certainly do that.
Right. Or is, if there's a way to, you look at some of them, some of them already have brick and slab and some are slab, you know, sort of depends where you are on the, on the street. You know, if there's a way to combine the two into both of those more, you know, and I'm, I'm trusting, I'm trusting you guys are working on that.
Yeah, the plan for any of the, the new crosswalks will be to use the stones that are there. So we would use, for instance, so that the standard is basically to have the, the granite stones as the borders and then the, the brick as the, as the walk area.
Perfect.
And so if, again, we, we want to use the stone that's there because that's where it came from.
And Rob, one quick question. Go ahead, Don.
I, I was just going to say, it's really nice to see you reutilizing a lot of the historic materials that are there, but seeing Nantucket actually becoming somewhat handicap accessible friendly, it's just, I mean, we're seeing a big difference in a short amount of time. I mean, with the Macy Warehouse becoming accessible, the way the club car accessibility is being integrated into the sidewalk you're doing there now is just, I, I just think it's really, it's really great and to see these crosswalks become more friendly for...
Sure. No, I appreciate that. I mean, ultimately, the goal is, the, the primary goals are really safety and accessibility. So wherever we can, we're really trying to do that. And again, I don't, I'm, I'm certainly still the newcomer here. We are getting a tremendous amount of input from all kinds of different sources, some that you would never imagine. And they're all really good and we're able to incorporate a lot of those little tidbits into making a better project. So I appreciate everyone's input to date. We've gotten great feedback from...
Rob, yeah, I just had, sorry, I just had one quick question. We're talking about accessibility and the stones that had the mortar joints, did those have mortar before or were those dry set?
Uh, those, there was concrete in that walked area.
There was, yeah.
But most of those stones had sort of popped up and that's where we had seen, a lot of the stuff was loose. It had sort of delaminated from the concrete that it had been set in.
And any of the stones that have, wherever it's dry set, we're not putting, so we're not putting mortar where there wasn't mortar before for any of the other sidewalk improvements? As in, I'm thinking some of the bigger slabs, only I'm thinking about accessibility and I know the mortar joints do help, but that probably has to be balanced... I know the mortar joints do help, but that probably has to be balanced with the historical...
Yeah, so the larger, we're talking mostly up in the three brick area is where there's a lot of stone slab. We will likely be setting that in stone dust like the rest of the work so that it can, but that has yet to be determined.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we recognize that as the trees mature, you know, even if we blanket those root systems with organic material to protect them before we build, you know, the sidewalk again, we recognize that the tree is going to continue to grow and this stuff will, will start to migrate again.
Yeah.
Which I think people are going to be eager for, to sort of give it that uniqueness again. It'll get there. I mean, if you look at any of the brand new stuff that's been done six, eight months ago, it's been heavily walked on. It doesn't look brand new anymore.
Yeah.
It doesn't take long to start to really break in.
One, one comment I will make is that it has held up to the cars driving over it, which is, which is, is a positive to me. And I notice how you're setting up these curbs sort of, and if you look at a lot of the, some of the pictures in here, that's vehicle damage. You know, the, the picture where, of that driveway with the stones, you know, this one here, you can tell that that's trucks or vehicles driving in and out, smashing.
Sure. So as we focus on Upper Main Street here, these are basically the sections we're talking about is, this is the Pleasant Street intersection. So just slightly above that is 98 with the three bricks and then down to Winter Street. So we'll be starting, I believe it's right here at 86, 88. We have an example of stone sidewalk and brick sidewalk in the same block. So this would be a great example off the bat for folks to be able to come out and, and really give us their feedback on. And then this is, this is the look up Pleasant Street and it's likely we're going to be coming back and tying in at a helpful location, whether it's all the way back at the first intersection or a driveway, we'll make that determination. There's also some planned Pleasant Street work in the, in the mix, you know, that's got to be considered. So we don't want to do things twice in a short period of time. The piece I was talking about in front of 98 at the Pleasant Street intersection, it's kind of a, not the best picture to look at, but to show the, to highlight the issue here, but there's, there's a two inch gap at the bottom of the step here. So this landing really needs to come up and it's working against, because this is a sloped area along this whole stretch and there's a jog out here where the curb comes in. So we're working with the homeowner to get their feedback along how we deal with this piece here. Here's another picture in color of the, the tree wells that are bumping out. It's, so it's possible that we could extend the curb line from up here down through this area, sticking with the outside edge here. And then because there won't be the two sort of splayed crosswalks through here any longer, we would gain a tremendous amount of plantable soil borrow that would continue to provide nutrients to these developing trees. These are sort of some highlights of, or lowlights of some of the rolling curb and mixed, like this is a concrete piece here and some of the, the out of alignment and puddling going on around the Winter Street intersection. Right now, these two catch basins are simple infiltrators and the plan in the short term will be to tie those via a pipe down Winter Street to the Liberty Street intersection so that we will have the ability to drain this intersection while this, this is ongoing. So this is up in front of the three bricks. We have the large slab stones and while, while it's possible to sort of realign these at a slightly higher elevation, you know, things we need to be sensitive to are the drive, the locations that do have driveways as well as some of these stones. I'm getting lots of very specific feedback on some of the stuff and some of these stones were put in far sooner than some of the older stuff. So we're going to, we're going to really be taking a look at that. There's also stones, this might be a highlight here where it actually had, it's sort of worn to the point where even if it's reset to marry up with its cousins, it may be out of alignment for, and unable to meet ADA accessibility requirements of a tolerance of a quarter inch. So some of the things we'll have to consider. Some damage that Matt was highlighting earlier, which is likely related to heavy loads driving over limited supported areas. This is a downspout drain here as well and sort of a, a mix of concrete and old bluestone. Over here, there's been, this is the corner of Pleasant and Main over here at the Hadwin House. There's a, an old fire alarm pedestal. There's, this is undulating right now about six inches. There's a huge drop in here. This corner is a mess and people just drive right over it. And there's been an attempt to put bars in here in the years past. So this whole area needs to be looked at again. But the, the goal through this area, and I'm not sure if I have a good picture of the Pleasant Street look, but from curb here across Pleasant Street is only 17 and a half feet. So we have a similar situation like we did on South Water where we have limited, limited width and limited width sidewalks and we have trucks with trailers and a lot of other heavy vehicles coming through those areas bidirectionally. So one of the things we want to do is to be able to have the vehicles and the people share the surfaces. How we're going to do that is to lower the sidewalks and raise the cobbles in those areas so that we have a very limited gutter, you know, an inch or two, so that when the vehicles do come down and need to, when, when there aren't pedestrians present, the vehicles have an easier job mounting those curbs and getting out of each other's way as they cross through that intersection, as an example. This is our standard for brick sidewalk. So we're making sure we have a compacted subgrade, six inches of processed gravel for subbase where necessary, and then a stone, stone dust bed with either new or existing bricks relayed at the slope that's required for ADA accessibility and drainage. And we have either the Glengarry brick or the, if they're slate or stone, or SNH brick. And, and then finally, that same detail here for the sidewalk. And then the vertical granite curb exists in various stages. That could be granite or it can be bluestone. It varies in width in all kinds of locations. So we're setting that in concrete. It basically has a nice bed of six inches of concrete around and under and it's set on compacted base. We have a gravel subbase, a three inch dense binder course or whatever the pavement design is for that specific stretch. And then on top of the pavement is a stone dust with a cement mix and then you're laying either Belgian block or cobbles on top of that and then filling those with stone dust as well. Basically the maximum curb repea, curb reveal of six inches down to a minimum of zero for a flush situation. That's about it.
Rob, with the, with the binder, does that change the, I don't know what the word is, permeability or will the water, drainage, will that change at all?
Sure. So there's been a lot of questions about permeability of the existing cobbles. And I think when people see or recognize that during a rainstorm, you see the water running off and you see the water puddling in these uneven areas, it shows me that these areas are not pervious. They're basically impervious. They've been driven over and compacted so much for so long and there's been deposits of silt and that sort of thing. So they are acting as they are already paved. Certainly the root systems are getting water from the ground as well as from the air. And there's evidence that, that a lot of the trees, particularly on this stretch of Main Street, are subject to groundwater influence. There's, there's some areas where the tips, the tops of the trees up near 98, I know for a specific example where you could see some die off at the very tip of the tree because the groundwater is lower in the summer and it's not getting all the way to the top of the tree. So I think the, I'm less concerned about cutting off water supply with the asphalt and more concerned about protecting the roots that we know we're going to find in the asphalt or in the, in the roadway. And to sort of help allay people's fears about what this is going to look like and, you know, we certainly don't want to see asphalt at any time under the cobbles. So we want to build a test section up at Public Works so that we'll be able to drive over that for a substantial period of time, take pictures of it during construction to be able to show it as a sequential construction piece to people, so people can actually see it and understand it and then watch it perform for a good, you know, minimum six month period before we actually come out and go to town out here.
Thank you. My other question was, in front of 98, means, is that curb coming out at all or is it staying right where it is, just fixing it?
That's yet to be determined. We're, we're working on that right now. The, the goal would be, I shouldn't say goal, the suggestion at this point is to try to essentially line up the, instead of where the, the curb jogs in, line that curb up with the curb in front of the Hadwin House, which would basically allow for a second tiered, a lower tiered sidewalk, something similar to what we did out in front of Macy Warehouse. But we're working through the details with the homeowner there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any thoughts, questions?
I'm just going to the rest. Next.
Yep.
Okay. I gave you an update last week about the Surfside Crossing 40B independent reviews that the board authorized. And I have an update this week and I'll probably have another update at your meeting next week. There are three independent reviews, as you know, and there's some information in your packet. I labeled as draft because I knew that information would be coming in between the time that this was prepared and now. And there has been some additional information that's come in. Since last week, we received the hydro geological report. I've named it wastewater, but it's not really wastewater. It's hydro water quality, really. That report has been received. It's, it was attached in your packet and it's been posted online. The environmental report has also been received, same thing. It's in your packet and it's been posted online. I want to bring your attention to a couple of things. The hydro report was sent around to some of the town departments, health and water specifically, and they have come back with some proposed potential conditions that could be passed along to the zoning board of appeals. So I have a question into town council, but my thinking is that what maybe some of the next steps would be for the board to issue some kind of a supplemental letter to the ZBA containing information from these independent reports. The consultants doing the independent reports are going to be at the hearing on Wednesday, but it might not hurt for the board to submit an additional letter. Now, I don't think that's going to be necessarily ready by next Wednesday, which needs to be worked on, but that's kind of in the thought process right now. Additionally, as I think you know, we have had a request to send a letter to Natural Heritage and Fish and Wildlife specifically regarding some of the items, regarding the items that our independent reviewer has made note of and which other parties have brought forward pertaining to endangered species believed to be at the site. So we have drafted a letter. I consulted with our environmental consultant as well as Ed Marchand, our zoning board, our, the zoning board's 40B consultant. And there's a draft letter in your packet here for the board to review and ideally send at the earliest convenience. The traffic, so the couple of things that are outstanding include, we are trying to determine, I am trying to determine, I guess, if the developer's environmental report is complete. To my knowledge, as of today, no one in the town has received it, although I do have an email backup, so perhaps it might be in there somewhere. And I'd like to get that, if it's allowable, to our environmental consultant to review. So there are definitely some things I think that we want to bring to the attention of Natural Heritage and Fish and Wildlife, which pretty clearly don't seem to be mentioned in the documentation so far.
Yeah, I thought the letter was great.
Yeah, do we, do we want input on the letter tonight? Is that, can we, I, because I sent one thought.
You did and your thought I passed along to the consultants. Matt's thought was to add the word endangered in front of the northern long-eared bat and the other species, wherever they're mentioned. And that, that would be fine. That's kind of a, the advice I got back was, that's kind of a stylistic change and, and that would be fine. The, the bat is, I believe, considered endangered in Massachusetts, but threatened in, by federal standards. But I, it, it sounds like it certainly wouldn't hurt to use that description.
Yeah, I just think, I was, or, yeah, highlight that you've got something here that's, you know, not just normal, so.
Yep. The traffic report is due sometime this week and I'm hoping to get my hands on that very shortly, pass that along as I did with the others.
Do you need direction or consensus on any of these letters for ZBA or for Wild and Wildlife?
Well, I would ideally like the board to authorize you, Mr. Chair, to sign this letter that's draft before you, if you're comfortable with it, and, and get it sent out.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the letter with the change that Matt suggested.
And I'm not there yet. Or Megan's probably has a comment too, but...
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, yeah.
Megan, do you want to chime in on this particular motion?
On your letter, but...
Letter, okay, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want me to talk now or?
Yeah.
Okay. I would like to also stress that you probably put something in about the habitat, seeing how this location is a continuous pitch pine forest, which is what these bats use for their habitat. So I would stress that to Natural Heritage because they look at not only the species but the habitat.
Thank you. Is there, I'm assuming there's nothing in there in the letter about habitat?
I guess it was...
Yeah, it's not.
Probably assumed.
Yeah.
But I can talk to the environmental consultant and the 40B person to see where we could work that in.
I think that would be worth commenting on. I also just, as a bigger note, it would be interesting to know how much pitch pine forest, continuous pitch pine forest we have on the island in general if we're concerned about this one particular plot, but that's future.
Yeah, that was, one of my questions was on finding out what the mitigation possibilities are, what, oh, what, what the mitigation sort of remedies are for these kind of things.
They're various and our environmental consultant will be advising us on that and will be helping us with that. So if there are ideas out there, they can be provided to me and I can review them with her. We've talked about a couple so far, but we haven't really nailed any, nailed it, nailed that down.
So the motion was seconded to approve this letter. Do we want to, do we need to add?
Yes.
Yeah. For discussion.
Yeah. And I, I'll, if we add habitat, I'm good.
That'll be a friendly amendment. Sounds good.
Do we need to vote on the friendly or do we just, just go in?
I think it's okay. Does Cormac have a comment?
Do you have a comment on the letter? Okay.
Yeah.
For this, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks Cormac. I call your Nantucket Land Council. I just wanted to be on the record for extending a thank you to you for sending off the letter and doing what you can do to protect endangered species on the property. Thank you.
Thank you Cormac. Now the other letter, did you want some consensus? To the ZBA letter?
Yep.
Oh.
Did you want some?
Um, I don't, I, um, not quote, well, I'm not sure if I quite need that yet. I, I may need to get it figured out a little. I'm just saying that I think that may be on the horizon.
We need the traffic report.
Right. And maybe I can get something together for you that has everything in one letter.
So next Tuesday, we have a board meeting. We'll have another chance to go over traffic, anything else? Do we put that, do we talk about putting that on agenda if there needs to be any?
Yeah, um.
Or no?
There, there is one other potential thing that I guess, I, this, I only saw this today, late in the day, so I'm not really prepared to totally go on about it, but it seems that the developer has submitted, um, an additional proposal. And I'm not sure how the zoning board of appeals will react to that, but that may be another comment letter and/or wrap it into this supplemental letter. So I, I need to get that figured out with town council and whoever else I need to figure it out with, but just bear that in your minds also.
Okay. Seems like a letter to the ZBA is going to not change much on these independent reports regardless of what the new proposal is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think our initial comment letter will change much, but I think we might have some specific conditions we want them to take into consideration.
Any other, go ahead, go ahead.
I would, I don't know if you, there's anything else on that.
Is that public yet, the revised proposal?
It came to me from Plus through Eleanor and I, sounded like it was going into the ZBA packet, so.
I'm, I'm just asking because I'm sure people want to look at it.
It's, it's, yeah, it is public. It's in the packet. It went out to.
Okay, I haven't seen.
Yeah.
Hi, Eleanor Antoniati, zoning administrator. It has been posted on the town website, thanks to Florentia who acted very quickly. And it will be included in the packet and I've also sent it out to Attorney Durensis and a few people who are probably here. So it is definitely public.
Thank you.
Thank you Eleanor. I, I didn't see you there. Anything else about that?
Any other thoughts from, from the board? Is anybody else here who wants to comment on any of this, whether here? Okay.
Um, I just want to mention a couple of other things, not related to that. Some upcoming agenda items at your meeting next week, and remember your meeting Tuesday, not Wednesday. The agenda's not entirely final yet, but right now it looks like, um, for agenda items, we will have another update about the Surfside Crossing independent reviews. I'm going to be putting together the town manager monthly activity report. Um, the finance director and I are going to be reviewing with you fiscal, I forgot to mention this this afternoon at the agenda meeting, fiscal twenty preliminary budget projections and overview. We've been doing that every year, right, right around now. It's a little bit later than normal this year. And we talked about having a discussion about twenty nineteen annual town meeting warrant articles. So I'll have a little bit of a list for you of those things. And you do, you will not, of course, have a meeting on October tenth because that is the night of the special.
And yes, we have to start thinking about ATM two thousand and nineteen, the week before, special town meeting and a special, special town meeting. That's what it is. Cause if we don't, it'll be the end of October if we don't start it now. What's our thinking today? Is it all for, for town manager report?
Yes, thank you.
Any comments from the board?
I, I have one. Um, Affordable Housing Trust, we had our, what will really be our final strategic planning session with Judy Barrett. And after this, she will be putting together a strategic plan and, um, really we're very close to sort of a, a task list at this stage. And, and just to kind of give you a very brief overview, but what we really identified at the trust is that, um, the main issues we have are identity and people not knowing who we are and what we do. Cultivating relationships and reaching out, whether it's within town government and without really working on maximizing, collaborative opportunities as well as making sure that we have better relationships within town and without collecting information, evaluating the programs that we have and that we have in the future, and then how we sort of get that information out to the public as well as again, within town itself. So really working on the presentation of the things that we're doing and want to do. And part of that is we're, we're making steps to work with the data platform. And we've come up with two questions, one quantitative, one qualitative, to really try and get, um, you know, as much information we can, even more than what we have and specific to Nantucket on existing housing stock. And then the qualitative side being more about what people want, what's affordable, um, what they're dealing with now, Nantucket Shuffle, who's doing it, how, where, when and why. Um, and then lastly, hoping that all of this really leads towards, um, having a consistent source of funding, so. That's the update and, you know, we've really, from where we started six months ago now, after last special town meeting or annual, actually, um, we've made a lot of headway. So I think the strategic planning process has been excellent. It's been very different from the one that we did as a board, um, but it's been, um, very relevant and, and really fits what we needed as the trust, so.
Will, uh, will sort of non-cash incentives, is that part of the plan? That's good.
Yeah, absolutely. Really looking at again, all the tools that we have available to us. And a lot of that will come, we feel will come out of developing some of these relationships that we have that can foster a little bit better.
Down the road, do you guys, will go a little roadshow or a report here and other places on?
Yeah, that, that's exactly what we're thinking about is again, for data collection, for having more of a, a face in the public so people know who we are, um, but also really having more of a liaison that is possibly giving this board more updates regularly. That is above and beyond the reports that I give. So again, that being the updates and, and having the information in a way that is engaging, so.
Yeah, I'd like to see sort of just a, I don't know how long you want it to be, report on your old strategic plan, what you guys came out with, that'd be.
Yeah, absolutely. And that'll be done. And, and the goal is to keep it shorter. And one of the things that really, that we would really like to do is have everything be as visual as possible. We have been, and I think many people have been very impressed with the data platform and how they've been representing their information visually and realizing what, um, what better comprehension you get as to any issue that they're presenting as well as then response and engagement and feedback. So we're really hoping that that will be something that we incorporate into everything that we do. Yeah.
Thank you Rita.
That's it.
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to mention that we had our first meeting about the future of the senior center. And sort of started a game plan for how we're going to move forward and look at potential options. Um, and then CPC will start our review of applications next Thursday, the fourth, which will go on for about a month.
Uh, the Board of Health met last week and as we mentioned when Dylan and, um, Julian were here talking about testing of the marijuana products manufactured on the island as a result of a carve, carve out by the cannabis control commission, those products will not have the same rigorous testing that products on the mainland do. Um, so we're going to be reaching out to them to see if there's a way, and they offered to do that, to see if there's a way to enhance that testing here somehow. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I can follow up. Uh, I gotta, and this is a little bit to do with, uh, Board of Health, I think, but, uh, there was, I got a call today from a, a resident who was on New Lane and there was a bunch of water from a draining up from pool drained out into the street. And so he got a call and said, geez, I thought, you know, you guys were looking at that, uh, what's the impact of that? He wasn't sure if it was a saltwater pool or a chlorine pool, and if it was a chlorine pool, whether it had been, you know, properly, you have to, it has to sit in the sun for seven to ten days before the chlorine isn't inert. The saltwater, uh, are always bad. So he said, I'm not sure which one it is, but they're draining it out into the street. What are you guys doing about it? And I said, I don't know. We referred that to the Board of Health. And I know Jim and I talked about it. He said they're going to bring it up again, but I think it is increasingly an issue that we can't ignore. Uh, I think, you know, the idea that, oh, there's saltwater, they don't hurt, that's wrong. I learned that, you know? And, you know, and there, if there's an impact and we need to know what the best practices are and start figuring that out before we, you know, before it's really too bad. So that's just a plea to our representative of the Board of Health and to this board to take that issue seriously. Uh, the second one, which is.
So I, I wasn't aware of this, this event that just happened.
No, that's why I brought it up, yeah.
Just telling you that.
We, and we, and I had a discussion.
We didn't have this, that conversation about that.
No, not about the event. We had a conversation just about pools in general. And Jim was like, nope, we're gonna re, you know, we've already talked about, talking about it again. So I wanted people on the camera to know that it is going to be discussed at that level. The other one, Nat Law sent around a couple, uh, a letter and an editorial from the Vineyard. I don't know if you guys saw it today. I think I sent it out to you guys too. And it's very interesting that they're, uh, they are struggling with vehicles in the summer. They had fifty thousand more cars than they did, uh, you know, fifteen years ago when they asked the steam, this summer, this summer season, than they did when they asked the steamship to cap it, uh, you know, fifteen years ago. Uh, they have hour and a half long traffic jams. It's impacting their quality of life severely and, uh, and they're trying to figure out what to do. And they're worried about what happens if all this traffic makes them a less desirable place for people to visit. And I'm sort of, I, you know, it's interesting to see that, that it's sprouting up over there this, you know, it's sort of similarly with some of the same concerns, and I think we really need to think about it, so.
Uh, one more that I forgot to mention as well is that the, our Island Homework Group had their first collective meeting as a, as a larger group with the consultant that is working with us. And actually, I was very impressed with the, um, the programs that they use, the experience that they have, um, and their ability to take all of our what-if scenarios with the site that we have and being able to run that through various modeling situations and looking at the finances in addition to all of the quality of life elements, the room composition, um, really going into details that I, I don't think that we had this before. And I think this is going to be very, very helpful in, in deciding what comes next with the Island Home. I don't know if you want to add a little bit more?
I just want to add that this is not an official work group. It's a work group put together by town manager and the consultant that we've engaged as Rita mentions is going to be looking at these different scenarios. And there are meetings with stakeholders that have yet to be scheduled, but a lot of this ground will be covered with them as well. But I don't want people to get the impression that we've set up a work group and didn't put people who are interested on it. We just haven't gotten that far yet. And I think there, there are going to be more stakeholder-like information gathering sessions and things like that. People will have an opportunity to meet with a consultant and go over their own scenarios if they're different from what we've come up with so far. I also just wanted to point out that if someone sees an event like a pool draining into the street near a wetland, it would be better if they called one of the enforcement agencies like the Health Department or Natural Resources. I'm sure you're totally on top of getting in touch with them immediately, but in case you're not, that I, they might, they might be all over, but.
I, that's exactly what I told them to do.
Good. Did they do it?
Who knows?
Okay.
I doubt it.
And I just want to add, I mean, I.
They didn't do it. They didn't do it.
They didn't do it, but I just want to add that that's something that I have seen a lot. And there are a lot of misconceptions about saltwater pools and chlorine, and I do think it is a major issue, so.
It is.
I have seen it in a, in an area where I might live near, someone mentioned it to me, similar to you. I saw this thing draining. I contacted Natural Resources and they went out and looked at it and addressed it. So it, it, there is something that can happen, but it needs to be kind of quick after.
Are you going to do it right away? And, yeah. And one question before we leave the Island Home, are they, are we using the consultant's expertise in staffing and management, those type of issues as well?
Yep.
Yeah, that's my pet peeve. I'm just making sure.
We have your pet peeve.
In mind.
In mind, yes.
It does no good to have a building if we can't run it, so.
I was really impressed, very comprehensive and again, experienced, even, you know, experienced with just every question that could be thrown at him that came up last time, so.
And I think it was interesting to note, when we had our legislative representatives last week, we heard that our, our nursing home is now the only municipal nursing home in the state and the Commonwealth.
We're soon to be.
It's closing. I had a couple of things. I went to the straw showing, um, this week. I was there, I was in the back. Yeah. And it was good. It was, it was nice having a panel with our DPW director and Graham, our new recycling coordinator, and a restaurant owner, all talking about just straws and plastic and the landfill in general. It was good questions from the public. I didn't stay for the whole thing, but it was, I thought it was really good engagement. It was packed for the second showing.
Yeah. No, it wasn't. I do want to say a very big thank you to Rob. Uh, there's some great questions on the panel and it was a, a good opportunity to just talk about the current landfill and the situation. And we really were surprised the first time around by the numbers and, and again, the second time by the numbers. We were in the studio theater, so it was smaller, but it was still packed, so.
Uh, second thing I had, a woman came into the coffee shop this morning and said, wow, you're, she just got off the high line. The sidewalks are amazing. She works for the school. She comes over a couple of days a week and hasn't came since, been here since last June or May. So it was, it was interesting to see somebody for the first time go down straight war, you know, by all the way down Zero Main. So she had a nice compliment.